Master General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, Union Grievous Consideration to Discuss Strategy with Respect to Collective Bargaining of an Open Meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of a public body and the Chair so declares so. Master General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than the professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline and dismissal of indoor complaints and charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or an individual. Master General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss the strategy with respect to potential litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the Chair declares so. That's the rejection of the Cannabis Control Commission, the executive host agreement with Apothel, marijuana retail establishment at 747 State Road. Master General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of a public body and the Chair declares so. It's to discuss the present letter from McGregor, Ledger, and Stevens dated August 21. Master General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effects on negotiation position of a public body to discuss 762 Dartmouth Street, 404 Elm Street, and the Crepo Fields. Do I have a motion to go into the executive session?
To move.
By Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. O'Neil on the motion. Any questions? Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brooks?
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
And the Chair votes in favor. We'll return as close to 6:30 as possible.[421.21]
August 26, please rise and we salute the flag and please remain standing thereafter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we offer a moment of silence for our service personnel, both here and abroad, and also a moment of silence as Dartmouth lost the mayor of Dartmouth, Donald C. King, former principal of Dartmouth High School and mentor to many, many people in this town. Please be seated.
Thank you.
All right. Any warrants? We don't spend any money this week. All right. Okay, that's good. All right, first item on the agenda, we have appointments. You have EverSource.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Do we need to read this portion?
Wow.
This meeting is being recorded and all, all...
Members are present.
Members are present and there will be no roll call votes as it will be by voice. All right, so I'm going to open up the hearing for EverSource to install one new pole and anchor guy along Division Road. Hearing is open.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for having me this evening. Jessica Elder, representing EverSource, as you know. So EverSource is proposing to install one JO pole on Division Road with an anchor and actually a down guy as well to support the pole. This work, I'm sorry, this work is, this is the wrong one. Why do I pull out the same? Sorry about that. There we go.
You wrote Division, huh?
Yeah, this is Division. I'm sorry, I had, I pulled out two other jobs in front of me. The work shouldn't take more than a couple of days to, to do and if a detail is necessary, they will request one. Other than that, that's...
All right, just, just out of curiosity.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is JO, FO, ES? What is that with the poles?
Okay, so JO is joint owned. Those are poles that are owned jointly by Verizon and, and EverSource. FO is an, is a pole that's fully owned by EverSource.
Thank you. That's, that's important.
And how many do we have of each?
That's Anthony's, that's Anthony's thing. All right, so there's anybody in the audience who looks to, who has interest in this favorably or unfavorably?
I have just one question because I have a letter. I think I'd be only a butter that would...
Okay, all right.
So you have to get up and...
Get up to the mic and...
Is that for Division Road? For this one? Okay.
Susan Boulay, 364 Division Road, on Dartmouth's side. And so I, I, I understand it's, it's an FO pole that supposedly we're talking about, yes. Not, you mentioned JO, but, um, which I, it's all Greek to me, but I do know that it must have to do with the, the solar farm that's in there. Is that what this new...
I didn't get that information about the solar farm.
It says zero...
Zero Division Road, is that what solar farmers...
Well, I don't know, but zero is zero. Across the street from me is the, the heinous solar farm that was put in. So I'm sorry, I, I'm not happy about it, but because it went through wetlands and, which are really, I, is tragic that Westport and we, we went through a long time of going against it and you're not probably involved with that, but Westport turned it down, but then the company went to the state and of course the state said, oh, okay, let's do that because it's solar, but it is in wetlands and it's, it's just, it's really a travesty. If we were, you wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to build like the way, what they did, you know. Anyway, I'm, I'm just, you can see I'm upset about this, but having said that, it's there. And I just don't know what the, what is the impact going to be on whatever this pole? Is it a huge pole? Is it something bigger than the average pole or...
Forty-five foot pole, which is our standard size pole now.
Yeah, is that, because is that like what the new ones they've been putting in? I've seen new ones coming in down on Division Road.
Yeah, it's our new standard size.
So there's nothing else going to be, someone had mentioned that it was going to be some different...
There will be an anchor supporting it.
So what does an anchor look like?
It's basically just a, a wire, guy, wire coming down, anchor in the guy wire.
Well, they all have that.
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Yeah, just supporting the pole.
And then what was the other thing? A down guy, what is that?
That's part of the support as well. On this part of the wire that's attached, that, that, you'll see a thick, thick wire that's attached. That's the guy, guy wire. And then it anchors, it anchors into the...
Okay, so, and I see on here that it's, all right, so here's, that's our pole or something near our house.
Right, so it's coming off an existing pole.
But this is...
And coming across here, so it's going to be on town property, which we're here requesting.
Oh, oh yeah, so it, okay, I'm trying to see, okay, this is in front of our house, so yeah, that's on the road. So this is the new pole.
Which will also be...
And it's, it's going to be attaching to that one? Is that what's happening?
Yeah, it's going to run from that pole to that pole.
And there's nothing there right now, obviously, because there's nothing up there. So I did want to say that Division Road is considered a scenic road in Dartmouth and I don't know, I don't know what other impact right now, you, you know, it's, anyway, there's a huge, there's a road that goes in and then I think it'll fill in once the trees come in and stuff, but I just, I, I don't know, I know you're not involved with that. I don't know how it, it, we just kind of got out of our hands and went to the state and state took over, et cetera, kind of thing. So in future, I, I really think, we have to think twice about our land and what we're putting on it. A solar farm, I really think at this latitude, I don't know how, how, how much they make from that, who, who benefits from it? I don't think we do. We don't get any of the...
That solar farm, that solar farm's in Westport though, correct?
It's on Westport property, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we weren't, we weren't notified of the farm or anything like that, so...
It's, and it's funny that I'm here, but our, and the butters, I was wondering why the Westport butter, there's our neighbor across the street on Westport land didn't get anything about this.
You'd have to talk to Westport about that.
I know, I know, I assume, I assume that...
Probably be because we're petitioning Dartmouth because the pole is actually Dartmouth property.
Do you see how?
Yeah.
It's like ridiculous, there's so many...
I mean, I understand that Division Road, I understand that Division Road is a scenic road.
Pardon me?
I understand that Division Road is a scenic road, but every single scenic road in the town of Dartmouth has telephone poles.
Oh, no, it's not that, oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. I'm thinking of the solar farm thing more than anything, really.
It looks like this does not benefit the solar farm. Looks like this is depending on a residential.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have a letter. Oh, you're right, there it is, sorry. Okay, so what, so why, so why was I called here? So that I would know that there's a pole going to my, from our side?
We notify, we notify all the butters where the pole is as to, you know, where it's going, whether or not, you know, I mean, you have the ability to come forward to say you're in favor, you're against, or looking for information or be totally ambivalent about it.
Well, I'm not really for it. I have no dear, it's not going to be any, someone told us that it would be this much larger, bigger thing because it's having to, whatever, get the electricity from the farm to bring it to wherever it's going. Is it, has anything to do with that? Is that what that, that pole is about? There's so many things we don't really know.
The pole, I, they, that's the information they didn't give me on what it's, what the pole's actually being put in there for. But like I said, it is going from this existing pole.
The diameter of the pole isn't going to change from other diameters of the pole.
Yeah, I know, so then it comes...
I mean, you're not looking at a, you know, three foot wide pole, you know, that's a column. You know, you're looking at a normal...
Just a pole, okay, because that's what they were kind of saying. Well, it might have a big base with white and...
No. No, they don't, EverSource doesn't gussy up their poles. They dig a hole in the ground, they bury it and then that's it.
Maybe, maybe, but not, this is, I'm telling you, this is not fake. This is a real thing that's happened there and I, it's very upsetting.
Oh, the, the solar farm did, but I'm just saying the person who's telling you...
Well, it was person working on that, the site said that. It was somebody working there, so maybe they, they don't know, but I don't know.
We appreciate you coming by and trying to find questions. Understandable, totally.
I don't know. And my husband would like to be here and he's not really happy about it either, but if, this is the pole, I don't, really don't know exactly what it's, what its effect will be on us at this point in time. I don't know, the whole...
Chances are, I'll be honest with you, chances are, once they put... Chances are, I'll be honest with you, chances are, once they put the pole up, in probably, maybe thirty, forty days afterwards, you're not even going to notice it's there.
Well, we, it's been since January 2nd that they started working on the land across the street.
That's something...
Oh, I know, but I'm telling you, it's, they're still working on it now. And it's been huge trucks, huge machines, just ripping trees down. I'm telling you, it, it was, it was horrible just to hear the, the sounds that were coming from the trees as they were being ripped. And I, I know, it sounds crazy, but I really felt like they were screaming, they were screaming.
Doesn't sound crazy.
It wasn't, it was awful. So I don't know, I, I kind of don't want it, but at this point, I don't know what they're, they're going to do, so you don't know what they need, so we, the question is, what kind of, I'm sorry, what, so what, how, what kind of, like, is this the raw electricity or whatever that's coming off of the solar farm? Is it going to be going from that, from that pole to this pole, the new pole? I mean, I'd like to know what kind of, that's an impact, I think, if it's a whole lot of, of voltage, I don't know.
Excuse me, maybe, so, maybe you can get that information, get her information and then, and then we...
The customer's name is Christina Tapia. That's the, that's the customer's name. She's the one who requested the pole.
Oh.
Get that information from EverSource.
Okay, and is she works, she works for the, um, the, the solar company, maybe?
No idea, it doesn't say.
Christina Tapia. You have any more information?
I don't, I'm not in contact with the customer, so I wouldn't have that information.
It's a 301, maybe it costs.
And I can have my, um...
All right, that would be good.
Email and a number.
Okay.
Excellent.
Jessica, while you're doing that, I have, I do have a question. So, looking at the map...
Yeah.
There's the existing pole and then thirty feet...
Oh, yes, okay.
In thirty feet, this proposed pole will be put down. Will the existing pole remain?
The existing pole, that's to the left of it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so this is an additional pole to carry the load, okay.
Okay.
That's my only question.
I think I'm going to give you my husband's, because mine hasn't been working too well.
While they're doing that, does anybody else in the audience have any comments about this for or against? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing. Board's pleasure.
Motion to accept.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
I'll second.
Mr. Tattelbaum, on the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thanks.
Non-unanimous, okay. Next, we're going to open up the hearing for Energy, EverSource Energy to install a new pole and anchor along Bridge Street. Hearing is open.
All right, so that's, uh, pole number fifty-four over eight stub pole that we're requesting, it's a joint owned pole between EverSource and Verizon. And that, it, work is necessary to provide service to the Dartmouth Fire Station, um, ten Bridge Street.
Now, there's a pole there now. So is this going to be?
This is a stub pole, so it won't be a...
This is a what pole?
A stub pole.
A stub pole?
Correct, it's not a...
Tall pole.
Yeah.
Is this during their construction phase?
Taylor Dartmouth is requesting this.
No, actually, uh, five district one.
Fire station, mhm.
So you're putting a stub pole on the opposite side of the street?
So normally when we're putting in a stub pole, it's to support, it's normally for support, um, the poles to the left and to the right or, if more, or equipment is on, on a pole to support it. So this is going, um, five, fifty-four over eight is going pole to pole with a sidewalk, sidewalk anchor as well. And so we have two existing poles that are approximately, let's see, I don't have the footage marked here, but...
I can see them on the map, though.
Yeah, so that one is going in to support the, the poles that it's in between, that it's going in between to support the poles to the left and to the right.
On Elm, I mean, on Bridge Street?
Um, this is actually on, this is actually on Cleveland.
Street.
Cleveland, I couldn't read it, there was some other stuff in between it.
So it's going to support the pole that's on the corner of...
Seventy, yes.
Cleveland and...
Cleveland and Bridge. Correct.
Which is needed.
Okay.
Does anybody in the audience have anything to discuss the pole on Bridge Street? Or are against? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, on the motion to approve the pole installation along Bridge Street. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, non-unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
So we have, can, my husband, my husband's here, can he talk about the pole on, you haven't decided the pole issue with...
Pole was approved.
We just approved, yes.
Pole was approved.
That was, oh, well, I thought we were going to talk to the, um...
You can talk to the, you can talk to the people, but that has nothing to do with, the board has to approve, had the hearing, they approved the pole. The pole location. Yes.
Just a minute?
Yeah.
Jessica, would you mind giving them a few minutes?
That was, that was, we closed the hearing on, on the division. You were talking to Jessica about the pole, getting some information during that time, we closed the hearing and then we voted on the pole location.
I didn't say I wanted to have the pole there, I, and I was maybe ambivalent, but I said I wasn't, I needed more information, I did, but I need to know...
But that's...
If I was pressed, I would say no, then don't do it.
Unfortunately, you don't, you don't...
Chances are they wouldn't have...
That doesn't carry any sway.
No.
So...
Ask the one question, why were the abutters notified about this pole? What difference is this?
I know why.
You were notified about the pole.
That's what I'm saying, but any other poles that are put up, we never notified.
No, if, if there's a new pole, it's just, it's just that you were the sole abutter to this pole, you were notified. The, the hearing that we just did with Bridge Street, there were five other people, there were five abutters to the pole, they were notified, they're not here. I mean, you showed, to be honest with you, we've done hundreds of these, of these pole requests. I can honestly think twice, somebody from the abutters showed up regarding the pole. You have a second?
I'm just wondering why they, no?
Sean, can I?
Legal requirements, legal requirements, we need to notify the abutters when there's a pole, that's the legal requirements, that's set by the state.
Mr. Boulay, this is Jessica Elder, she, she's with the, with the, yes, exactly, yeah. She's agreed to take a couple of minutes to answer some of the questions that you might have on the pole itself, so, it might, it might help, yeah, thank you.
We've been dealing with the solar farm.
I know, they, they don't...
That's a Westport issue.
So that's a Westport thing and we can't, you know...
Do we have a scenic road in Dartmouth?
Half, one side scenic and the other side isn't? Basically, yes, that's what it comes down to. The, the, the portion that the town owns on Division Road, that's the scenic portion. Unfortunately, it doesn't extend to the other side of Westport, because we can't, we can't impose our, our scenic guidelines on another community's roadway.
Is there any situation with, yes, I know, it's two, two sides.
Yes, well, you're not the only one.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Under new business, Board of Public Works reappointment, Ronald LaBelle.
Oh, who's that guy?
Mr. McDonald, upon review of Mr. LaBelle's attendance at the meetings, which is eighty-six percent, I move that he be reappointed to the Board of Public Works.
With a gold star.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Brooks to reappoint Mr. LaBelle to the board, seconded by Mr. Mickelson, on the motion, any questions, being none.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Quick comment, I, in my work with the DPW, with the chair and the committee, I've had a lot of contact with Mr. LaBelle and in short term, short words, I'd say we're lucky to have him, he has, the experience he has is phenomenal for us to use. He has a great mind, experience, and it's a pleasure to work with him and he's great for the town. I'm happy he's renewing his, uh, his term. Thank you, Mr. LaBelle.
Thank you.
You have anything you want to say?
Anything further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-unanimous. All right, thank you, Ron. All right, next we have the reappointment of the Animal Control Officer Tracy Martin for one year.
Mr. McDonald, the information I have that Tracy Martin's is also an employee of the town and works in that department.
Oh, you didn't say.
Yeah, she's an employee, so...
Reappointed, then tenants, yeah, tenants check.
Yeah, she'll show up, she'll get...
We, so I moved to appoint her to the Animal Control Officer.
Motion made by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Mickelson, on the motion, any questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-unanimous. Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have the full meeting warrant articles. All ready, yes. No, no explanation of the articles, these are just placeholders.
That is correct.
And just to whet our appetite for further.
Absolutely.
So we have a total of eleven articles. We have one, Community Preservation, which is looking for a professional survey and preliminary design of a proposed northern scenic greenway. Then we have an appropriation to the stab fund, the appropriation to the stab fund for collective bargaining non-union agreements, appropriation for collective bargaining agreements, acceptance of the capital planning committee report and funding of the twenty twenty-five capital plan, personnel bylaw amendment, salary adjustments and new personnel. And then Article seven is the establishment of the Dartmouth Tree Bylaw. And then we have two charter amendments, the omnibus corrections, um, and the Director of Public Works. Then we have some zoning amendments and the citizens petition, which I understand, um, might not be on the town meeting warrant, because it is not... It doesn't pass the legal muster.
I just want to mention as well that Article, proposed Article eight is a follow-up to the Attorney General's review of the omnibus corrections that were presented to town meeting. So there's one aspect that needs to be tweaked. And Article nine, I'm not sure if this will be included, we're still waiting for information from the Board of Public Works on their efficiency study. I'll keep you posted.
Yep. All right, so...
One comment on that, it won't be an article, but we are going to approach the town moderator to make a, a...
Sorry.
I'm going to say something here.
My God.
Approach the town moderator, make a presentation on the update on long-range planning and where we're going from there.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have Communications Update.
So, um, as the board knows, Magnolia was before the board earlier this year and she provided a six-month overview of her activities and the outreach efforts of the town. She's back here this evening with another six-month update, the idea being that she'll be back before the board on a periodic basis to let you know what she's doing and what initiatives she's involved with, so with that, I will turn it over to Magnolia.
Trying to make a living here. Oh, God. Impossible. We have a timeout. It's impossible with this guy. I mean... All right, honey, let's go. Football game to look at.
It's not letting me move.
Wake me up when she starts.
And while she's working on that, I will just note on that last agenda item, um, we do plan on having a draft warrant on the next agenda with some additional detail on each of those articles with further explanation.
Just, any other additional articles, I'm not sure at this point?
Um, so right now, we have a place holder in there for zoning articles and so we're waiting to hear back from Anthony, but that might be split out into one or two articles depending on what he comes back with.
Thank you.
All right.
You got the four.
Magnolia Wilkomish, Communications Coordinator. Um, I'm here, like Chris said, today to talk about my most recent six months working in this role. We're going to compare my first six months to my second six months and look at a few other things. So, um, I just, again, I last presented in February of twenty twenty-four, so this presentation's generally going to compare October twenty twenty-three through January twenty twenty-four to January twenty twenty-four to June twenty twenty-four. It'll make more sense as we go along. So we're going to look at the social media that the town uses, our main social media platforms are Instagram and Facebook. We also have the town X, otherwise known as Twitter, um, which is updated with more need-to-know information. Engage Dartmouth has been doing well, it's steadily growing and it's more up to date than ever. Uh, we're going to look at communication strategies, um, this is important because it's easier to communicate when you know what your options are. And then we're going to look forward to my goals and the efforts I have to increase communication in town and economic development initiatives. All right, so first, we're going to look at social media and we're going to look at our Facebook outreach. So the first half, the previous side, is the first six months I was talking about and then the second side is the second six months or the most recent. So you'll see that previously, we had a reach of, increase of a hundred seventy-two percent and in the last six months, that's gone up an additional three hundred percent, basically. So that is on top of the one seventy-two that I achieved in the first six months. So you'll see the numbers are thirty-six thousand accounts reached to a hundred forty-four thousand accounts reached. So that's been our biggest uptick and it shows that we're hitting more than just residents in town, we're getting the full community seeing information we're putting out. And then with that, we're also getting an increase in likes and comments, not as significant, but still increasing from three hundred and eight percent or three thousand comments to four point four thousand comments, a forty-four percent increase. And then we are, we're growing followers pretty quickly, um, we had five point five thousand when I got here and that was a hundred sixty-four new followers. Now we have three hundred nineteen additional new followers and that is just through June thirtieth, we've gone up another hundred or two since then, so we're really, um, the graph is going up. We're accelerating with those things. And the same can be said for Instagram, we, we didn't have an Instagram before I got here, I created it, so on the left, you'll see those baseline numbers and how we've increased based on that, so we have, um, our reaches increased a hundred sixty-seven point three percent to three hundred and two accounts. Our likes and comments has gone up a huge amount, we're getting a lot more interaction. And that also includes shares, which is how we grow the account, which is really important for getting more people informed. And then seventy-two new followers and that's as of June thirtieth again, since then, I checked today, we have sixty-one additional new followers. So Instagram has really been doing well and it's a different platform than Facebook, we're reaching different audiences, a younger audience that are also interested. And I've also put it on the sign out front to follow the town Instagram, so every day, we're getting people that drive by that add it and so that's really fun to see. Um, our top performing posts are doing way better, so previously, the top performing post had a reach of twelve thousand. And so that would have put it right about third place on this list. So first place, our first two, or our best two performing posts were economic development and I think this is really exciting, this is something we can really grow in town and get people excited to live here and to know what's here and to have pride in Dartmouth. So the first or best post was daffodils at Parsons Reserve, this reached nearly seventy-two thousand people, or accounts, I should say, and had seventy-six shares. And then right behind it, we have Paden Arum Harbor being third best, that reached seventy-one thousand and had a hundred and one shares. So those two posts alone reached huge audiences and got us probably a hundred new followers. So that's a hundred people that are going to see the, the more important, more information-based posts thereafter. And so those posts include like the lifeguard post for Parks and Rec, which did really well, I think that was a lot of parents wanting to get their kids employed for the summer. And then, uh, DPW, I did not think this post would do well, but people really wanted to get the word out that water main flushing was happening, so they did. So you'll see I'm working with a lot of different departments still, Parks and Rec had a... Parks and Rec had a really busy spring because they're opening back up, they're advertising for their camps and other programs. So worked a lot with them, making some fun posts. COA was a new department I worked with. I'd worked with them briefly before, just staying in the loop. But here, I started helping them get the message out about their master plan and the survey that went with it is what I was promoting. And then always the Clerk's Office, I love elections and I love promoting elections. You can vote early now at Town Hall if you're interested and I'll always support the Clerk's Office and whatever message they need to get out. All right, Engage Dartmouth, I want to point out that this is a different platform from the town website. I know there's some confusion about it. Engage Dartmouth is really project-based. If the town is doing a project, it's going to be on Engage Dartmouth and it's going to show you the timeline, it's going to show you the funding, it's going to tell you who's involved and it's going to give you an opportunity to give feedback in a lot of cases. And so if you're in a butter or an interested resident, you can leave comments there, they come right to me. They come right to Chris and they're going to be heard. And this is different than the websites, the website's more department-based. This is for projects. So you'll see that we have had an increase in site visits in the last six months. We had about 3,500 visits, which is a 19% increase. We had 30 new sign-ups and we put four new projects, but almost every project has been updated. I've been meeting with Chris Vitale monthly to make sure projects are up-to-date and continuing to be updated, even if it's as simple as, oh, this didn't happen. We're going to say why and we're going to say when, we're planning to get that information or get that project rolling. And so I also wanted to point out which projects were most important to people, what they were clicking on the most. And I thought it was really interesting that drinking water quality and testing was by far the most visited of them all. And this is interesting because this project has been closed as long as I've been in this role, but people are still going back to it and that really shows that this is what people want to know more about. And I can take that information and create a message on water quality and testing and get the word out that our wallet, water is safe and long-range capital is working on a plan to re-up the facility. Next, we had the Candidates Forum, which was really cool because we had people submit their questions through Engage Dartmouth, so another way to drive people to the site. And then the MVP Grant, we worked with the Lloyd Center for the Environment and Round the Bend Farm here in Dartmouth to get the word out on this and to make projects based on it. And then the Recreation Center, very close behind it. People are interested in this project and they want to know what's happening with it because it is happening currently and relatively quickly. And then Font's Corner Road Traffic Relief, I think this project probably gets used out of rage. I can see people in their car getting stuck in the intersection wanting to know when it's going to get fixed.
Us too.
All right, communication strategies. So I had been in a meeting with Mr. Tattlebaum previously and he said he wanted to see a menu of what we offer for communication strategies. And so I wanted to show what, what I'll typically offer to people that come to me and departments that need something communicated. So obviously, there's Engage Dartmouth, which we just talked a lot about for projects. There's the town website, which is similar, but we can send out alerts through it and we can also update departments' pages based on what they're working on. The electronic sign has been a really good resource. It gets information out quick to a lot of people and in a simple way where it's, it's just one-line messages. So that's like the overdose awareness day event, that's on the sign and that's going to get people to know about it that are local. And then social media, obviously, is going to reach a huge audience, bigger than we can with anything else at a cost lower than anything else, so that's really great. And then a lot of times, the posts on social media will get picked up by the newspaper and get out to even more people. And then I've been working with DCTV a lot more this, the last six months. We're doing a lot more videos together and they have a lot of resources, a lot of knowledge and just a lot of enthusiasm about this stuff. And they also are posting like graphics as ads and stuff. So I worked with the, the Planning Board to put out a message that people need to display their home numbers. So we made an infographic for DCTV and we put it on the sign out front and we put it on social media. So that's an example of how three of these would all get used together to get a message out. And then that also works with press releases, this is for new, important, fast information that needs to go out. And I've recently started doing the police press releases, which has been really fun and something new to do and getting at the journalists in me. So I've been working with Carrie Liddo over at the Police Department on that and it's been really good, I think. And then, of course, we have paper flyers and community partners. I think a lot of times, these could go together where, where we're moving away from paper, but posting paper flyers at places people are going is important. And then also, paper flyers at the COA, the libraries and other places people are used to going to get information is helpful. And then working with community partners to then send out to their audiences information we're doing. All right, looking forward. So we're, I'm, my goals for looking forward to the next six months is improving brand image. So creating a strong brand image is going to really make the Town Hall look professional, organized, efficient and recognizable. And then the electronic newsletter, I have not forgotten about it, I'm still working on it. And there's a lot of options with it, so we're going to get a little bit more into that. Economic development, so again, continuing to post to create community support and then reaching out to our community partners to make sure that they're supporting us and supporting them and we can all work together. And then What's Cooking is a new cooking show I created that I'm pretty excited about. It's utilizing town resources to share information in an engaging way and I think it's a lot of fun. So town branding, you'll see on the side here, I've put just a couple different head, letterheads that we have going around Town Hall. And this is something I think can easily be cleaned up to create a cohesive brand image. It's going to reflect the town that's cohesive and put together, which we are. And so a lot of different departments have a lot of different letterheads, but I think we can make a template that's going to be easy to understand, easy to find information and just work well for every department. So we would make one for like, if you have a board like listed up here, there would have a place and a place for contact and then the staff contact on there. So it would just clean up what we were already working with and make it very recognizable using our new logo and stuff. And then another point we could do is email signatures, make sure every town employee's has a signature that's cohesive using the logo of their department or their building and make sure it looks professional and everyone's on the same page with that. The electronic newsletter, so the timing on this was the problem, I feel. I started drafting it in December of 2023 and it was set to go out in April of 2024. I highlighted the town administrator, the upcoming election, what I do in my role and where to find more information in town. But then we had some resignations and that was kind of a weird time to start a newsletter that focuses on the Select Board Office when leadership was changing. And then that got me thinking more about how are we going to deliver the newsletter? Because when I think of a newsletter, it goes directly into your, to your email, but you can also get a notification to download it from our website, which we are able to do now. Or through Engage Dartmouth, we have a really simple email capability where it's literally just an email that can go out to people. So that could also be a way to tell people to download it. But that wasn't like, like an online shopping-type newsletter, which is what I had in mind. So I started looking into softwares that we could do that with and I found some, some really good ones. There's a couple that I'll plug into Engage Dartmouth and work with what we already have. And they'll send out professional newsletters that are easy to create and easy to follow for a reader. And then these softwares also have re-engagement tech strategies. They will auto-welcome people, A/B testing, and it'll collect information on what people are interested in. So we're meeting the audience that wants us. However, that comes at a cost. It's not free for the software and it would be about $5,000-ish in one-time fees. They told me they might be able to get that price down. And then annually, it'd be somewhere between $7,000 and $10,000, which we'd have to work into the budget if this is something we decided was the route we wanted to go. So the options are there, I am aware of them and I'm continuing to work on them and make sure they're accessible and able to maintain over years in town. Economic development, so this is something I think in my role I can start putting out more of. So this is going to get us an increased reach. We've seen that the posts that are economic development-focused do really well and people share them and people want to have pride in town. So if we can play into that, it's going to be really good. And we're going to play into that with partnership opportunities. We're going to work with local businesses and nonprofits like we do with the Lloyd Center and Round the Bend to make sure people know what's available and that we're all telling each other about each other. And then we're going to promote local tourism. Dartmouth has a lot to offer, we have a ton of natural resources. We have the mall, the university, there's a lot here and a lot to promote. And that's something I think I can do within my role through the communication strategies previously listed. And finally, I'm going to talk about What's Cooking in Town, a little plug for the cooking show I created. So it takes advantage of the studio kitchen we already have, which is such, just something I've never had access to before. So I said, I, I, this is here, I have to use it. So I had the idea to make a cooking show where we have town employees come on and not necessarily the, the flashy, front-facing employees we have at meetings and everywhere. But in our first episode, we had Chad Deschamps, our Systems Analyst, on, we made smash burgers. And it was a really good way to talk about what he's doing, which is forward-facing, but from the person doing it, not second-hand. And it's going to build community because everyone has to cook and everyone has to eat. So by watching someone doing something you're so used to doing and it's so normal, it's going to create the sense of community that there are real people doing things with the, with your best interest as a resident in mind and they like to make food too. And then that's building trust and transparency because people are going to watch those videos through to the end and get the information about whatever we're sharing, whatever projects that employee's doing because it's interesting, it's easy and it just makes it less of a chore to find out about what's going on in town. And that's really my job at the end of the day, is make information easy and fun for residents. And so What's Cooking in Town has been doing really well. Our first episode, which was Smash Burgers, has 22 syndications and somewhere around 400 views on YouTube. And so syndications means that other towns that have community medias have taken it and started airing it there. So that's really impressive for a show that's hyper-local and focused on Dartmouth. Twenty other towns want to know what's happening in Dartmouth. So that just speaks to how, how, not innovative, but exciting this show is. And then the Casey Diaz with our town clerk did even better with 23 syndications. So it's really exciting and it's a lot of fun to do, so I like coming to work on those days. And now I'm going to encourage anyone watching or anyone here to stay in the loop. You can do that by signing up for Engage Dartmouth. You can do that by following the Town of Dartmouth on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, X. And then if you have some time, watch What's Cooking in Town. It's fun, it's informational and it's free. So that's what I have for you all today. Thank you for listening and taking the time. And if you have any questions or comments, I'm here.
I'm going to volunteer to do one of your shows, cooking shows.
All right. I spoke with Peter Chase and he said, as long as you're not in an election in the next six months, we're happy to have you.
Right, yep.
Thank you, Magnolia.
I'll let you know when I'm, I can cook pretty well.
Make those slap burgers, right?
Yeah, they're going to be burgers, a little more gourmet than burgers.
Thank you, Magnolia.
Of course.
Slap burgers?
Smash.
Smash burgers, okay, okay.
I just wanted to say that I've worked with Magnolia on a couple of projects and her mind thinks in these platforms, which is very different. So she is definitely a digital native. And so I'm, we're, we're very lucky to have her on our staff.
Yeah, Magnolia, I'd just like to say, great presentation, number one. Couple of things that, that you had touched on. And one that I'm always concerned with is trying to make sure that we've got enough applicants for all the boards in town. And I know that's, that's definitely a concern of yours. I didn't know if, if you had enough lead time on the board positions that are coming up for renewal, either if they're incumbent or if it's an open position. I'm sure Chris has the list.
I'll tell you a quick story. Last time I was here, the Select Board meeting, they were doing the, the application hearings for the Recreation Center Building Committee. And they had said they heard about it on Facebook, which is really saying to me, posting it on the Facebook. So I've worked a lot with Mark Garrett especially on that because he's been having trouble gaining, getting people to join, join the Conservation Commission if you're out there. So yeah, I'm definitely working on that. And it's something that's fun to do because I like getting people involved in the community.
And, and one of the things that I had brought up a while back with, actually with, I think with the prior town administrator was coordinating with One South Coast. And you had mentioned them and partnering, in the partnering opportunity area of doing some type of annual event, you know, similar to what the city of New Bedford does with the Chamber. And it doesn't, I don't, I don't believe it costs the city anything other than the time for the employees to be there. But we could get a venue, maybe Rachel's or one of the other locations that can handle that number of people and get sponsorships for it and just, you know, give out some awards for people that do serve on some of the boards that are doing a great job or even the businesses in town, highlight the businesses in, in that, in that function. Give the town administration an opportunity to, to talk about some new things that are coming up, maybe the budget items, highlights, things like that. But I, I think to mimic something like the city does with One South Coast would be a great thing for, for the town.
Absolutely.
And, and I'd be more than willing to help out with that if, if you need some help with it, make some contacts. Thank you, great job.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
David? I've been looking forward to the presentation, thanks for doing it. I know there are some committees, some groups like COA, it's really conducive and you're doing a lot of work with them, but there are other smaller ones that, are we, are we able to reach out to them or do they know the capacity of what we can do for, say, I don't know, the DC, the Cultural Center where they have events? Not picking them in particular, but to drill down to find out and get more of the lesser-known but critically active committees that have stuff going on that could help, we could help them with whatever they're doing, whether it be hiring or activities, what do you think?
Absolutely, I know the Dartmouth Cultural Center, they have good turnouts for their events. I've been to a lot of them, they're doing a great job and I'm always happy to help them out. And I, you see, I'm in frequent contact with them. But also like smaller groups, like I've worked a lot with the Tree Committee on their work. But I'm sure there's other committees that are falling a little under the radar and I just need to talk to them about what their needs are so that way we can get those needs met.
Would it help to have a, some kind of a, a form to send to them that they could, when, if and when the time comes, they could fill it out and send it to you and get you engaged in that or something to, to let them know that it's available? Because I think a lot, because it hasn't been available and it could really be helpful to them.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. We've been doing a lot of word-of-mouth with my position and one good review goes a long way and I'm trying to help as many as possible. So they're, they're trickling in slowly and I think we could ramp that up a little bit, like you're saying, and get more smaller groups to know what I can do.
Thank you.
Of course.
Well, thank you, Magnolia. Great job. I'm sure we'll see more information in six months from now.
Absolutely.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda to discuss and potentially approve the new HCAs for Apothro Therapeutics for the retail and commercial cultivation at 747 State Road and 757 State Road respectively. Mr. Vitale.
Yes, so as the board recalls, the town entered into host community agreements. The ones before you this evening are with Apothro Therapeutics, both for their retail side as well as manufacturing. With the recent changes in state law, after we approve host community agreements, they are sent up to the state, to the CCC, for them to review and confirm that they are in compliance or that the host community agreement is in compliance with state regulations. They did come back to the town with a couple of changes that they wanted to see, which have been done and included in this agreement. So this evening, the vote would be to approve the updated and amended host community agreements.
Questions on that? Do we have a motion? A motion to approve.
Second.
More to both, both agreements?
Yes. That's it.
A motion made by Mr. Tattlebaum to approve the new host of community agreements for Apothro Therapeutics at 747 State Road and 757 State Road. Seconded by Mr. O'Neill. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Three, two, passes. Next item on the agenda, we have the Back to School Backpack Program. Just to, just as an FYI, as to reason why I voted no, I voted no on the first time around, so I'm just going to continue to vote it the second time around, same way, so.
And the same for myself. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
This program was organized by Dolores Joseph, our youth commissioner. This program was organized by Dolores Joseph, our youth commissioner. And she worked with, I have it written down somewhere, Matt, hang on. She worked with the School of Wheels of Massachusetts to get a donation of backpacks. She was able to get 112 filled backpacks. They were organized into pre-K backpacks, K to 2, grade 3 specific, 4 to 6, and 7 to 12. I distributed the backpacks between Friday and today so that the schools would have them in advance of their opening day. But there was a wonderful turnout with new supplies and new backpacks, which is great.
Terrific. I'm sure, I'm sure, much needed to the people that really need the assistance with that.
Right. And it's great to have them for the first day of school, so that when the kids are coming in and don't have a backpack, the teachers can take note of who needs it, and by the end of day, get that to them.
You know, actually, the only question I have is, how did we go from carrying our books to backpacks? As to what decade did backpacks become vulgar?
Good question. I was a carrier of books.
Same here.
1998.
Well, when I carried a book.
We didn't have books.
Most of my books always ended up in my locker.
You had to go to class to get books, Mr. McDonald.
Yeah, I know.
Carried my books.
You go to classes, you know. I also spent time down in the senior lounge.
Waste books on you, that's.
And the real tablets.
Spent time in the senior lounge.
Principal's office didn't need books.
No senior lounge by the time I got there.
And I know Principal Kenevy very well. He and I were on good terms. All right. So next item, we have the Dartmouth Overdose Awareness Day, which is August 29th.
Yes, this Thursday, and I'm holding up a flyer. Hopefully, you've seen these around town, as Magnolia mentioned. We have it on our rotating board out front. But this Thursday, we're holding our second annual overdose awareness day. We're actually holding this one right in front of the Town Hall, right on the front lawn. We have a number of speakers. We have JoJo's Coffee Truck, which will be there. Anyone in attendance can grab a drink or snacks or both. We also will be acknowledging and remembering, without stigma, those who have died from an overdose and the grief of their family, friends, and loved ones in the communities they lay, they leave behind. We had a great turnout last year. Last year was a regional event. This year, the communities have decided to go back to their own areas to see if they can promote inclusion in their community. We will be meeting after this, after all the events are held, and deciding if next year we will do independent or move back to a regional for, format. But Dartmouth will be forever on the Thursday before Labor Day. International Overdose Awareness Day is August 31st, every year. This year, tomorrow night, anyone interested in doing more than one event, overdose awareness in New Bedford will be happening down in the Common Square. On Wednesday night, overdose awareness in Taunton. And on Saturday, the 31st, there will be overdose awareness events in Fall River and Marion, if anyone wants to participate in more than one. Otherwise, I will see you in the front between 5:00 and 7:00 Thursday evening.
Thank you. Anybody else on that? Next item on the agenda, we have the Charge of the Town Administrator Screening Committee, as you have it in your package. So, you want to just kind of hit the highlights on this?
Sure. So we're going to approve the call center to come up with a charge. And this is what they suggested include in the charge for the committee. So before you, if you'll approve the charge, after that, you guys can vote to establish the screening committee.
Okay. All right. So basically, this kind of lays down a little bit of the rules for the screening committee to go through. There is a time, timeframe. The month, month one was the development and the approval of the profile, placement of the advertiser, and to begin the recruitment. Month two is the recruitment itself, and to meet with the screening committee to determine the candidates which to invite for interviews. The third month is to interview the candidates for the preliminaries, and then perform the reference and background checks. And then finally, it's, it's our time to make that determination, so. And it is requesting that people who are interested in serving on this committee to contact Melissa at mparry@town.dartmouth.ma.us. Letters can also be dropped off in the Select Board Office or dropped off in the silver box in front. Just make sure that it's attention to Melanie Perry of the Select Board Office, and just please note that, you know, what it's for. And we're looking to have these, these done by next Wednesday, September 4th. So we appreciate that.
The short window.
That's the short, well, I think we can get people.
And in the end, we're going to be looking at all these letters and selecting five to serve on the screening committee.
And I think we'll, I think we will have five, that's for sure. My understanding is already a couple in, right?
Yes, we received two in so far.
Okay, so all right. So we're almost halfway there. All right. So that's the charge. Now, we need to do is we need to vote, make a vote to establish the Town Administrator Screening Committee, as proposed by the charge. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Ms. Brooks. On the motion, any questions?
None.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Good to go.
This will be posted tomorrow.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
Okay. Interim Town Administrator update.
Yes, just a couple things. First is, a memo was sent out this past week with instructions on submitting capital requests for FY 2025. As you recall, we are moving to a new priority ranking system of 1 to 4. So this will replace the previous departmental ranking system of 1 to 10. This new system will allow the town to better categorize and evaluate capital needs across our departments. And forms are due at the end of this week to Gary, so we'll see what's coming in. On a related note, the Long Range Capital Planning Committee let, met this past Tuesday, and they are working on outreach materials ahead of Fall Town Meeting. Next item here is, new flooring was installed in the employee break room today. So if you're walking by, I encourage you to take a look. That work was funded through a grant obtained by the Human Resources Department, and it is really nice to see it all sort of coming together. Lastly, I'm pleased to share the town was awarded $113,100 through the Municipal Vulnerability Prepariness Program for a Phase 2 assessment of its vulnerable infrastructure. We are in the process of finalizing that grant contract now, and we look forward to starting that project in the fall.
Sounds good.
That's it for me. And I don't, Gary, if you have anything.
Gary, you have anything?
No.
Gary's also, okay.
That's it.
All right. All business. Bliss Corner, anything?
Nope.
Lake Nook and Joke?
Nope.
Municipal broadband?
Gary did mention this at the last meeting, but the presentation will hopefully be before the board in the next month.
Okay, good. And Title V?
Nope.
I just want to ask municipal broadband, recently, we had Sarah Lamott step down. Have we had anyone that has given and claimed to be a part of the municipal broadband?
Not at this time, but working with our communications coordinator just left.
Okay.
We will redouble up our efforts to try and have that be a fully appointed committee.
Great.
Terrific. Okay, we have no minutes. Select Board Updates. Anybody have any updates?
Nope.
The only thing I, the only thing I, I would like for our next meeting, I know there's a lot of road, roadwork going on in town, a lot of mill work. Some, there have been some questions as to when is the final work going to be done on the road. So if we could just have an update on that, just to kind of, at least, if not posted on Engage or wherever in one of our social medias so that people know. Because driving on milled, on milled roads is not the fun, is not the best thing. So people want to know when things are going to get done.
There's a lot of work going on in town, in town on our roads that desperately need it.
Oh, no ifs, ands, or buts about that.
Congratulations to the crew that they've done a great job.
No ifs, ands, or buts about it. All right. The other thing that we have is we have.
Comment?
Yes.
I've done some research on the Senior Tax Work Off Program. I visited a town and sat with the administrator from the COA in terms of what their program is. And it's basically, and I'd like to, I'm not here for a discussion, I'd like to get it onto a discussion, do some research on it. Senior Tax Work Off Program, briefly, it's, seniors are able to, up to $1,500, they can volunteer their time, and they can reduce that number off their tax return. And I spent some time in Freetown, and it's a very successful program there. And they have quite a few people, considering it's a small town, who are participating.
For, it's on property taxes, correct? Not tax return.
Right.
It's property taxes.
What did I say?
Property tax.
Tax return. We don't, we don't, we're not the IRS.
What did I say?
Property tax, property tax return.
I'm sorry.
It's the property taxes. Just want to make sure. I don't want to get.
I, I, I'm not here to discuss it in detail, but it's a great program, yeah.
It's, it is, it is a good program. It gets, it gets us needed volunteers. And if it helps them, you know.
And we, we had it years ago, and, and it's, and it's viable. It's not that difficult to administrate, but I think it's something we should be looking into, and to get it on the agenda here, talk about it.
And we all know who brought that to our attention.
Well, a number of times. And I went out and did the research, and it's for real.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
I just want to remind everyone that school starts this week. The staff is already in their buildings with meetings. But the kiddos start on Wednesday, so please make sure if you are someone who commutes to work, and you usually drive by one of those school buildings, starting Wednesday, add a few extra minutes to your commute. But also, please make sure that you are aware that the yellow bus takes precedence, and when it stops, you stop, whether you're facing it or behind it, so that our students are not in jeopardy. So I just want to, yeah, have a safe and successful school year, and it starts on Wednesday.
But what I would also like to do, and, and with that, is that if you are driving and you happen to notice a vehicle passing, a school bus, with the school bus lights on, just make, make a, you don't have to report the vehicle or whatnot. Notify the police department. Let them know when and where it happened, and that at some point in time, the police can patrol that area at that time, maybe catch that person or other persons who are doing it, and they won't have to do it again. It, it's time that, you know, we have, we don't need another incident like we had in Reed Road 20 some odd years ago. We don't need that. And God forbid that that ever happens again. So. With that, we also have a notice of a public hearing, a request for comments, DPU 24-104. What's this, what is that about, Mr. Vitale?
So this notice was provided to the Select Board Office. We received this, I believe, a couple weeks ago at this point in time. It is an application that is currently in front of the DPU. I believe the applicant is Eversource with regards to their SMART program. They have a public hearing that's scheduled for Thursday, September 19th, and they also are accepting written comments. So with regards to the application before them, if there's questions, you know, residents are open to making their comments known.
All right. Well, let's get that posted on the town website, because I'm sure, I'm sure, I mean, I wasn't aware of it, and I'm usually pretty good on social media. But I think that's something, you know, comment on, because there's some, there's some funky charges on our bills from Eversource that need to be discussed.
And that meeting's going to be via Zoom.
Right.
Yes, it'll be.
Thursday, September 19th, beginning at 2 o'clock.
Do you have anything else? Okay. Do I need a motion to adjourn made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Tattelbaum? Thank you, Mr. Tattelbaum. That was wonderful. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, none unanimous. Good night, everybody. Thank you very much.